Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to, special call meeting to order Thursday, July 24th, 2025, and it's at 5:30 PM. This is in the City Council chambers. I will jump into this because it's a special call meeting, we don't have, we just have a ten items to go into. If you, I think Danny mentioned to you guys when you walked in that he had something you wanted to speak on as an agenda item. You signed up on here. We get through this and you find out that you still want to speak, you can always put your name on the sheet, but we only have two people so far have signed up for it. Agenda item number two, introduction of new employees.
Josh, would you come up here and introduce your employee, please?
It is me, Mayor Council. I would like to introduce Jim Powers. He's the new manual control code enforcement guy. If you see him around town, he'll be in the white Chevy truck, the older model white Chevy truck for the county. And if you see him around town, go ahead and say hi. Thank you. If you want to say something.
Just want to thank everybody for having me. So.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. It's just now getting hot, yeah. We've been here three years, so I'm a little bit used to it.
I would like to add, just as a secondary note, that this is one step closer for us removing, or being removed from a safe build. And anybody that does developments or additions or things of that nature, be advised, we're quickly moving towards a regional contractor and we will have that done very soon. And then I will issue the notice to safe build where a contractor is contracted.
Okay, we'll move to agenda item number three, discussion and action on water quality issues, groundwater and remedies and budget amendments to cover costs.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, citizens, for coming to this meeting tonight. Hopefully it will give you an update that will give you a little bit of encouragement and a brighter start. If you look on the screen, projection screen up there, you can see three lines. Not that it really matters a lot, but colors of the lines doesn't matter as much, but I do have the legend here. Blue lines are less than two inches, yellow lines are two inches, orange lines are four inches, red lines are six inches, black line is eight inches, purple line is 12 inches, and the green line is 15 inches.
Just making sure, can everybody, can you guys all hear back there? Okay.
Okay.
I talk about that every time.
Okay. Well. This is better?
Yes.
Okay, good. We've basically rearranged the lines over here so the screen is easier to see. When I'm talking dead lines or dead ends with people, I forget, you guys don't deal with water lines and sewer lines and things of that nature. So to help better explain it, I brought this visual in here. That GI line right there, it's a galvanized iron line. GI, that's one of the many ones that we need to replace throughout the city. As I zoom out away from that particular area right there, it will show other areas. They'll also have items listed as CI, which is cast, cast iron, this is galvanized iron. And then there's going to be asbestos cement water on it, which is, it doesn't sound as bad as it seems, because as long as it's solid and not disturbed, it's in a prime state, so it's okay. But as you can see, there's galvanized there, galvanized there. Where it's noted also PVC, that's where some work has already occurred. We're going to increase those on the map and we're going to do a better update this time around as we're doing the work. But you can see there's a dead end right here. This is 155 Center Street. There's a dead end between that line and that line. There's a dead end between that line and that line. Pardon me. There's a dead end between those two lines right there. There's a dead end there. When water sits in a line, it goes stagnant and it will get sour and it will start smelling nasty and it'll get dark. And since it's under the ground in these iron lines, it gets rusty too and something happens. So this does, this map doesn't show the fire hydrants, but if they hit a fire hydrant or there's heavy usage in these residences here, like 6:30 in the morning, a lot of people taking a shower, wives up cooking breakfast, running the sand, starting laundry, getting all the water flowing. The water that's in this line here will get drawn back into that one. Once it gets drawn back into that line and this heavy usage stops, then this water pressure from the city comes back into that line and forces the dirty water up into your yard lines. Now, it's not to say, I had my water line look dead in my house. This was built in 35 and it's in bad shape. I might have to replace it pretty soon. But it's a, it was a galvanized iron pipe and it's really bad shape. I should have brought a picture of that for you. But this is standard throughout the city. And this is, as you can see from the map, this is Converse Street. This is 155 Center Street. And what we're talking about with Bevco is from this point where this PVC line starts here, moving northward. Sorry about that. And bringing this all the way up to this point where it's going to tie into this big loop. This is a very, a large loop around the city. But as you can see, as we move around, let me zoom out here. I hesitate. The further back we get, the more lines, they're not as easy, oh, the more lines we see, they're not as easy to see, but there's a dead end loop, there's a, or leg, there's a dead end 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 leg. I've identified so far 61 within the city. And it's just how the development occurred over the years. They've developed a certain portion of the water lines and maybe they, at the time, they didn't have another one to do. There's a dead end right here, we can just jump back right over there. Let's go down to Barter Loop here. Okay, I'm going to zoom in on this area. It's a whole lot easier to do at my desk, let me tell you. Now, recently, there was a lot of red water complaints and dirty water complaints coming from this area of Barter Loop. We, our crews went in, they found this line, they brought it down, and they attached it to this line with a valve. And now we have water flowing through here constantly through a pressurized system of the city. We don't have it here yet, so we won't get all the red water complaints out of this area just yet. We were called up to Cypher Loop to do repairs on to Cypher Loop, and we're working there. When we get finished with that, we're going to come back down here, bring this line down hit and lay and tie in there to complete that loop there at Barter. Complete that line at Barter Loop where we have a constant loop. As we move on up north of the city. Yeah, I don't move too far. Some of you here off of Park Drive and Giddler and Lester, you may recognize your area. Again, two very long videos. And we're starting up with our crew here and we're working our way down and around. We're going to tie in this water line to get rid of this because the same thing happens. And when we stop at these hydrants and we flush these hydrants, that's pulling all this water out of these lines and putting it over the drainage facility, getting the clean water there and getting the dirty water out of the lines. I appreciate your patience, patience with me on this, too. There are even some unmentioned lines. I was talking with Amy at the Economic Development Board and she had said she has a water line in her alley. It's not even shown on this drawing, so we're going to have to go in there and locate that and find that and make sure that it ties into this line here, which is, this is a newer line, which is PVC. They're just all over the city. My apologies. It's, it's taking us a little bit longer to move in the direction of getting these repaired. It's quite more extensive than I had imagined, but we are working on it. And part of what we're talking about on this agenda item here is remedies and, and the budget amendments to cover the cost. We're going to ask for a $200,000 budget amendment, ask the council for that for the last two months of this fiscal year, and then we're going to ask for additional money to be put in the next year's budget for these repairs to continue forward. We think we can get it done at a better price by hiring additional contractors in addition to our crews, because our crew is five, six men, and we can bring others in and get bids for labors only. Because like David brought up a good point, right now, in a, in an inflationary curve, we may be right here at this point, we can buy a lot more pipe of what we need at this cost, carry it out over a two to three year period. I'm not saying it'll take that long, just using that as an illustration. Over a two year, two or three year period, if inflation went up 3% per year, that means the cost of the pipe went up 12%. We're saving that much by buying it back here. Again, what we have planned next after Cypher Loop and Barter Loop is we're going to get the contractors started there at Center Street from Grange to North Streets. And David, I'd like for you to talk more, you talked with Chad at Bevco Engineering about a, a system or methodology of the council that could improve, planning on capital improvements and restorations.
Yeah, there's a discussion with the city manager of Frederickburg yet, but basically they have an agreement, like a five-year agreement with one contractor, and they use, they'll kind of piecing it in, they'll, they'll do one section, another section, and they'll always go back to that same contractor, kind of like we do with shoepeck in a way. So there, every project's not a new bid. So it's just a program that they designed and started, so we're going to learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah, we're going to team up with their city manager and their director of public works to get these, the information we need, and then we're going to submit it to vote to make sure everything's good for the city and we'll, we'll move forward from there.
Let me pass this second. When, they say Tuesday, we had a meeting with sires from AOS, with AOS Treatment Solutions. And this is going back to the polyphosphates that we injected into the wells. I thought it was another blend than just straight polyphosphates, but these are his recommendations, a lot, a lot of detail in here. And so on the front page, we took gallons, gallon per each well for the month of June, and we took that times the amount of the chemical, the trace 100,000 gallons, so basically it's around $2,500 a month for that chemical. So I, a little paragraph in the middle there, I extended it out, so about 30 to 36,000 for a year for the polyphosphates. And what this gentleman said is that regardless of what else we do, we have, readings for the wells samples are in here. We have high iron in all of our wells and the polyphosphate sequestered the iron in the system and that will kind of help to eliminate some of the groundwater. Our aerators are up and running now and that should help with some of the odor in the water. So this is going to be a multi, multifaceted piece, you know, multi-pieces to get this solution.
And also, we are implementing a new flushing policy for our wells, our tanks, and our city lines. We're developing that and we're going to have several crews on there since it's in the write-up. But you'll see us around, we're not wasting water, we're getting rid of the painted water in the lines, to get it clear for you guys.
Don, did, was Bevco up any estimate on what they think going into the next budget year, what we would have to spend to tackle all of those dead ends?
No, we didn't talk to them about that, but we did say, well, they did say that we could hire them to do that, and I don't have a problem with doing that. Our rough estimate of what David and I calculated out would be about a million dollars for all of them, not just, yeah.
Close all the loops.
Yes.
But that's just to close loops, that's not replacing galvanized bond or gas turbines?
Correct. I don't know if Bevco had an old price for replacing this line that we talked about in Converse and North Street up Center Street. David, do you remember if they had a price for that?
A few years back when we addressed this, they said around 250,000 for that section there.
Just that one section?
In next year's budget, we have in there right now $370,000 for water lines and then $300,000 for the streets. And it's not uncommon, I think, for cities to, I think Schulberg uses this model, they'll, they'll do, put some money in the budget, like the 370,000, they'll do the repairs and then come behind and put street repairs. So they're kind of like following each other. So they're not doing the street repairs first and then digging them up, so they're kind of going like that, and they take little pieces at a time, much like Frederickburg is doing.
But in those situations, we see a lot of dead end galvanized lines. So are we going to connect galvanized lines that we're going to have to then dig up, place the galvanized lines later on, or cast our minds?
No, at this point, for example, that galvanized dead end right there, where it connects to the PVC, would be people, that would be replaced with PVC all the way down to that point.
Don? Go ahead. Okay, for instance, over there on Cypher Loop, where we made the initial tap, we found a copper line running from the main to residence house. While we were there, we had dug up, we replaced that cop, piece of copper line with PVC. So if it's exposed and we're there, we're going to take care of it.
Correct.
No, we're not going to go all over Cypher Loop and get all the copper out, we're not now, unless it's mandated, but, but as we expose things, we're going to upgrade things as we go. Thanks.
Don, we've been focusing most of our discussion on those two areas of greatest concern that have been brought to the council over and over, Cypher Loop, Barter Loop, closing those loops. The work that's been done to date, is that with our, our own crew, we haven't involved contractors yet?
No, we have not involved contractors. It is with our own group and to date, since we fixed that one area of Barter Loop, we have not received any complaints from the two largest areas, the two most frequently called in houses.
Last time we discussed this, it seemed like we talked about getting contractors online as soon as possible so that we could speed this along since basically the citizens have been facing this for a long time, that we could speed this up. Where, where are we in that process?
We have calls in the shoepeck. I forgot his first name.
Wes.
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 Wes, yeah, Wes. We have calls into him.
When did that happen?
Earlier this week. So I left messages and I called him again today. You have to go through the office to get to him, so. But he, you know, you can imagine how busy they are, so. If, if we can't get him, we'll have to probably go out to a different contractor.
We talked about it last week and we didn't contact anyone until this week.
Sorry.
Contractors.
I left a message last week.
They didn't get back to you.
We've been working with Chad at Bevco also. Right. Fine, you know, we're, we're begging to get that one, that main line there fixed first, I guess that's the most important line. On that first. How many orders are you expecting to see? 10 different contractors around the city?
Well, I guess I'm expecting to see more action than what I've seen and what has been a pretty standard practice over the years, that we do a whole lot of talking, but we don't do much more than speak to the problem and say we're working on it. Well, eventually, people are tired of hearing you're working on it. They'd like to actually see something done. Now, if it's because contractors don't return home, that's kind of a cool UK deal, we need to let people know, but it's just, it seems frustrating from this seat, but it's also frustrating, you know, sitting out there in your house when you're constantly facing a problem. And it seems like, at least the eight years I've been here, it's been a problem, at least that amount of time, and I noticed it on, on much longer than that, much longer. But we're always working on it. But let's get enough people in here to do something about it.
And then when we're doing those water line fixes, we are contacting the citizens, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we did, okay. Got to solve, solve some comments and.
Yeah, we always put the hand down.
Okay, just making sure it's being.
Several dead ends in the mains.
Okay, good deal.
And there was one, we had, on Cypher Loop, we had to cut a driveway, so we did talk to a resident of the house and notified them that, hey, the next year they should be cutting the driveway. And he responded, I was personally made that contact and he said, yes, that's fine.
Perfect.
So, yeah, we are working with him.
Is Derek here today or?
No.
No. Well, so no, we spoke on the phone regarding the gas line that got hit. You know, there was a lot of concern on that, which I said to you and I definitely think I need to make that public. So could you explain what happened in that situation for me?
So the gas line was clearly marked and it was, it was close to the curb line and our guys were pouring underneath the curb line, heading towards the driveway factor, and they were cleaning out, they kind of, they knew the location of the gas line and put eyes on it yet, and they were carefully digging with the mini excavator and they just caught that gas line and ruptured it.
And it wasn't an accident?
Yeah, well, the only thing that concerns me on this is we have a line locator on, on hand, and you know, before we were doing all this, I mentioned, hey, if we have this tool, why aren't we using it? They should be able to mark the depth, hook up to it and then know exactly where that pipe was before they were digging around there. I mean, that's, what if that had been an explosion? We're here all about safety. That's not being safe whatsoever.
Right, and Don and I discussed earlier, that's, that, that's gone done now, so we're going to let, finish that project and before we start another project with them, we're going to discuss what happened, review it. We also have the line locator, we also have the sort of jetting machine.
Correct.
Eight, it was an $8,000 jetting machine, we could have used that.
Correct.
So, yeah, so there are things that need to happen.
Correct, I just think we definitely need to do some soon. First thing, it's her.
We're going to give up a written set of instructions and expectations.
Correct.
Like barricades will be up first before the equipment is offloaded from the trailers. Once the equipment is offloaded, it will be put out of the way and if tape is needed between the two sets of barricades on either side of where they're working, they're to put up double lines, one high and one low along the barricades. There's just numerous things that we're going to add to it as far as instructions on safety.
Could be a, that's, we need, we need that. And if we don't have the training to run that long locator, we definitely need to get somebody out here to do the training.
Okay.
That's a tool we need to use.
It's going to be a very important after action to do with everything.
Yes, it will.
I know what Mr. Tucker said earlier about the water lines and, I guess, moving a little bit faster, if Shoebox not calling us back, Bevco can't help us go out to the ditch, right?
Yes, we, we've reminded that, Chad of that today. We said, look, we're not getting calls back, if you have any contractors you could refer, we'd love to get their list.
And I would, I would even go, you know, if we're getting bids in between our council meetings, we have a special council meeting scheduled for this, so they can go in first way or we just put that on the next meeting.
Okay, and the same thing like you were saying, we discussed this our last meeting, we should have been jumped on the next day, not last week. Correct. That's a, that's a no, that's unacceptable. We need to do better. Our citizens deserve better. Correct. But let's get this thing resolved.
We'll do that.
We're looking at $250,000, well, that was a couple years old price, so let's stay with that for the Center Street connection. Maybe $200,000 for miscellaneous for this year?
So, we need that budget in there tonight? It would help us be able to, if we do locate a contractor quickly, to be able to start more immediately.
How'd you bear that?
Come out of our reserve funds. Next year's budget, it needs some more work, I guess, but we're around $400,000 off, on next year's budget, the way it stands.
So, well, there's, there's not any question that this needs to be done to correct the problem, is it?
Right, and I don't, it's good to have money in the bank, but to have money in the bank and, and these problems that people face every day, that's not good either, so.
Have we looked at doing the CO at all?
Not since I've been here, though.
I guess we're, that's the thing, if y'all want to do that, and that would be, we can get John Powell involved with that, look at feasibility of doing that. That may be a good way to go, too.
Another question would be, to what extent do you want to look at the replacement of the lines, I mean, all north-south lines, all east-west lines, just the galvanized, just the cast iron at this point, replaced with PVC? We'll need a little more direction on what to tell the contractors, say they know what to do. I mean, if we just give them, when we need all these lines replaced, it'll be astronomical because they're going to cover it themselves.
Oh, really good. David, when you were waiting for this call from the contractor, what were you going to tell them you needed done? What were the contractors going to do?
The Center Street.
And that, that would be $200,000?
Yeah, the $200,000, oh, the $200,000 number was for the dead ends, looping them in together where we have a continuous flow of water throughout the water.
I think what they're asking is there needs to be some concrete, some quantifying numbers in order for council to make some decisions, but I don't think that's being provided to you guys.
And I, and I personally don't think a million dollars will touch this project. Here we are on the second dead end and we're running into things that we don't even know about yet. I mean, you've got 59 more to go, there's been some other unexpected things happening.
What's the bill from Center Point for hitting that line? I know it's going to be cheap.
Center Point could have been called out to address where that line was to begin.
No, they did, they, the line was, like we did, it was painted.
Well, it must not have been completely marked, or we wouldn't have hit it.
It was marked, it was marked.
Can I ask a quick, is, how did the city end up with that many dead ends? I don't live in the city, sorry, I'm Mary Harold. I just got a question, how did the city end up with that many dead end lines? I mean, the city has been growing for all the years I've been here. How did we end up with so many dead end lines over the years? And like, some of those dead ends, how old are those? You know, when did all this happen? When I first lived there, we didn't have bad water, it's like it just kept coming and coming, and I don't know if that's because of more usage, because those dead lines have been there for 30 years. Our water hasn't been bad for 30 years, so I was just wondering what happened in that timeframe?
Anytime water is mixed with metal, even, even in some instances on a level of engine,
And I, and I personally don't think a million dollars will touch this project. So here we are on the second dead end, and we're running into things that we don't even know about yet. I mean, you got fifty-nine more to go, there's gonna be other unexpected things happening.
And what's the bill from Center Point for hitting that line? I know it's gonna be cheap.
Center Point could have been called out to address where that line was to begin.
No, they did, they, the line was marked, it was painted.
It must not have been completely marked, or we wouldn't have hit it.
No, it was marked, it was marked.
Can I ask a quick, is, how did the city end up with that many dead ends? I don't live in the city, sorry, I'm Mary Harold. I just got a question, how did the city end up with that many dead end lines? I mean, the city has been growing for all the years I've been here. How did we end up with so many dead end lines over the years? And like, some of those dead ends, how old are those? You know, when did all this happen? When I first lived there, we didn't have bad water, it's like it just kept coming and coming. And I don't know if that's because of more usage, because those dead lines have been there for thirty years. Our water hasn't been bad for thirty years, so I was just wondering what happened in that timeframe.
Anytime water is mixed with metal, even, even in some instances on a aluminum engine, you can pull radiator hose off of the aluminum engine, and you can see rust within there because of the different alloys. It's not pure aluminum engine. It's got alloys in it, the same with magnesium, with cast iron engines. And over time, it builds up and it develops, just as a process. And that's what the polyphosphates help, is they go in and they coat the inner linings of that and stop it from coming, getting rusty so quickly.
But what happens, what's all accumulated on the pipe already when you use the polyphosphates? And I understand it's gonna like clear the pipes, but that's gonna cause more issues. It doesn't just suspend it.
David, would you read from that report and see if it clears the pipes or if it just coats the...
No, no, so, I mean, this is what Cyrus told me. He said that, once we get the system, if we go with them and we get the system up and running, in the first, I think, two weeks, he's gonna run the system really hot. It will, it will, it'll flood the lines, it will, it will, like you said, break it loose.
Flush, flush the lines.
Yeah, and so we will have more dirty water for those two weeks. And after that, it should clear up. And we're gonna do flushing and flushing and flushing, get it out of the lines. As it should clear up.
Well, that's where you gotta be transparent, so let your citizens know that, that they're gonna get ready to get a whole bunch of water.
Yeah, we will, we will, that was best to be part of it, but you know, we're not even there yet. We didn't have to, we can't just, with the cost, we can't just go out and say, yes, go ahead and do it.
Well, thank you.
We'll have to, yes, but you're actually right, you are.
And then that's a valid question, if you like that.
Correct.
They've been in the ground fifty years, sixty years, something like that.
Yeah, and they've been a few millennia using it for all that time. But I'm just gonna ask, and how, how did we end up with so many dead ends? That's, that's just a question.
What they did fifty years ago, they didn't think about...
People moving.
So, so Don, on those dead ends though, we, we have issues? I mean, have we had water complaints in pretty much all of those, or not? Probably, I mean...
On our, up there with the target area that we're looking at right now, everywhere. You see one of these red Sharpie marks? That's the complaint area. Along Columbus, these are those three blocks there. We've had numerous complaints over the past twelve months out of that block area, and look at the number of dead ends.
And that's why it's important for, when there's a water issue, to call in. So it can be labeled, and we know where the big problems are. And tonight, probably every meeting, I'll talk about it. Facebook is great information, but, information no matter where it comes from. But they gotta call in, so we can have some knowledge of really where it is and pinpoint, which is why we had Bartalute and Cypher.
We do warp orders, and everybody that calls in for a dirty water complaint, we do warp orders. That's all documented in the system, we run reports, and then Don used that information to create this map. It's also, TCE, TCEQ came up a few weeks back now for a water complaint. And they asked us for the dirty water complaints for the last two months, or whatever they chose a number. And so we provide that list to them, so we do use that, that information, and we track it.
So, Don, are most of these all in the northwest? I, if you zoom back out, I mean, I didn't see a lot in the northeast, maybe a few over there, but...
Yeah, let, let me...
It looks like it's more in the north. I know more in the south, but...
There's, there was just one complaint, and there's just one dead end. What do they mean? Here, one complaint, one dead end.
I just see a lot of the red markings.
Yeah, that, that's where...
More in the northwest.
Correct.
And this goes back to what Dr. Tucker was saying, those are our two hotspots that we talked about in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Why we needed to put the most emphasis on those two places. Not that the other ones aren't important, but when you have that many concentrated in one area, putting your efforts in there is going to maybe help overall. Yes.
Don, is, does it need to be two hundred thousand, or does it need to be two hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, I would say to address your immediate concern and close up some of the dead ends around first. Two hundred thousand for that. Once we get the, the engineering reports back on Center Street, there's some easement questions, where we can put it, if we have to put it down the street, we can say an easement. So there's some questions there. Tomorrow, we're gonna call in a line locator. There's a gas line over there somewhere, and we have to know, if it's on the west side, that's a, that's a no-go then, we can't put it there, so we're gonna have to get down the street, but that will add additional costs. So, until we get that study back and the big test results back, I think we just, we're gonna have to come be in limbo, and maybe we'll address that at the next council meeting. See about funding that. But in the meantime, if you want us to, you know, get these things going and start calling contractors, we'll be someone to do that.
A base funding amount, yes.
I think that's gonna be, you can amend the budget three times, five times.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
These are emergency situations, this is not something you wanna do, I would consider emergency situations.
I have a question, my name's Scott Krezak. So, I moved in about a year ago, I live just across the street from the high school. The, the water's been an issue since I've been here, so I took it upon myself to buy my, my house, a whole house filtration system. Is there any, have y'all even decided to, or even thought about kinda doing a polling to how many households have purchased that for their households because of the horrible water? Have y'all thought about that?
Uh, probably not. Well, I don't wanna say probably, I would say no.
Okay, and the reason I ask that, so, you're not gonna get a whole lot of complaints from people like me. Now, I change my filter, I clean my filters, and I do all that myself, but it's garbage. You know how much iron is in my filters every time I change them out? And that's almost every week, week and a half. Mary can contest that, if I go see her pour my filters. Okay? So, there might be folks that don't even complain about it, because they're just doing the remedy themselves, waiting on the council to make a decision, let's, let's write the check, let's get this ball rolling, even though some things are being done, but is there a final ETA? If there's not a final ETA, then we're just, we're just walking the dog. We're doing nothing. Okay?
It'll be tough to put a final ETA, because with sixty-one dead ends, again, how do you prioritize? If we get...
You start big, then you work down.
Correct, yes, and that's kind of what we're doing.
Okay.
Those were the two hot areas, I think I used that term in the last meeting. These are the two hot spots. And if you're kind of closing one end, it may be better two lines instead of just one. And if we get the hot spots done, then we kind of move out to where the next most frequent usage. We wouldn't know that yours is, because like you're putting, you're putting the filter on, yes.
Now, and I had to flip the bill for that, and you know, that's for a typical household,
Yeah.
you're lurking thirty-five to sixty-eight hundred dollars. Right? Living in the city limits, I should not have to spend that money on my house for a filtration city, filtration for my water when I'm on city water, I'm already paying for all that. Now, if I lived out in the country and I had my own well water, that's a different ballgame.
Right.
Right?
And there's probably not anybody sitting around this table that doesn't sympathize with you on that, it's just...
I don't want sympathy, I, I just want answers.
Well, I, well, that's what I'm getting, is, they're sympathize with you, but in order for you to give an answer, we have to know where those spots are.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
But I mean, this, this issue's been going on, it's not like it popped up two weeks ago.
Oh, gosh, you're correct, absolutely correct.
So, this should have been already, at a, at a bare minimum, halfway done. And it sounds like, from the information you're figuring, sir, that we may not even be an eighth wave done. Is that correctly interpreted?
No, they're nowhere near that close.
That's, that's, I'm gonna try to say it in the best terms, that's malarkey, okay? We need to do better.
Totally understand and respect your comment.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Appreciate that.
I hate to say I sympathize again, but I want clean water, I want clean water for everybody else.
Right.
I think there's anybody sitting around here that doesn't want that.
Oh, absolutely, everybody can agree on that.
Instant gratification just came up, it can happen, because...
But it shouldn't take a year. Two years, it shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long.
That probably will take, yeah, it will take.
How much higher taxes you wanna pay, pay for all, but that's just where it comes down to.
And I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm Christina Behrens, and I just, on that aspect of it, and I'm, like, I live here in Wimmer and everything, and I live off of Waterloo, but we also had our combs right there in the, you know, alleyway and stuff, but... Um, I just kind of, you're talking about higher taxes and stuff, what, don't we get grants from LCRRA? Don't we get other grants from other people, or can we not get grants?
If you've been reading the news at all, maybe you've seen the, the government's cutting back on grants a little bit.
I did see that, but I also do see that they do advertise grants for different facilities up there, and they, you know, they, this any little part of it, because of my church is actually asking for grants. You know, there's different things, there's different aspects of grants for LCRRA.
Certainly, I, you can check with the city manager, I know, I've been city attorney for a long time. The city avails itself of as many grants as it can get, but unfortunately, a lot of people want grants. You know, I mean, it's not...
But you have to understand, a lot of people don't ask for them either. So, I mean, like, what, if we don't ask, and we don't know, if they, you know, let them tell us no. Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you, you don't ask the question, you don't know, so, I mean, are we actually asking now? I guess it won't happen yet, and then if we do get it, then...
In answer to your question, we are asking...
And we thought, go ahead.
A community development grant will not address capital improvements. When you get a grant, like the grant for our, a water well in our water town, it's only good for the well, the land, and the lines running to our water treatment plant. If that only, it's a five million dollar grant, but if we only spend two million dollars to get that work done, that three million goes back into the key.
Why?
We don't get that four, five million dollars to spend any way we want to. That's not the way grants work.
I, I get that, but we also...
Answer to your question, yes, there are grants out there.
Yes.
LCRRA has specific requirements that they do their grants for. Correct.
They also have, when you, in the grant world, if you apply for one and you get one, like this year, you can reapply for three years or five-year period, so, and the dollar amount, and then we have to have it based off of points. If you have these many points based on your, what you have in the, in the reserves, when you got the last one, all, all that stuff is based off of points, which is why there's companies that help us fill out our grants stuff. Yeah, that's, that's what they do. And we have one that we've been working with for years, they've actually hired more people, and we work with them, sorry, David, but we work with them all the time.
Okay.
So, I, I wanna say we would be actively looking for the ones that we can qualify and help for this, because obviously, we know there's money needed.
Right, exactly.
Some of the grants are fifty thousand.
Yeah.
That's, that's not gonna solve the problem, yes.
Yeah.
But guess what? Fifty is more than nothing.
Exactly, that's where, that's what we're trying to get at. I mean, every little, maybe it helps, because I'm almost to the point where I was about to go and look at water filtration for the entire house, because as most of y'all know, we just remodel our house, and our stuff is nasty, it turned, you know, I just cleaned the toilet, it's a white, brand new one, and it's brown, you know, and stuff, and then, yes, it has, I'm better, it's y'all, been down over there. But it's just, you know what I mean, it's just kinda disappointing if you spend thousands of dollars remodeling your house, and it, you know...
I understand.
So, yeah.
So, LCRRA, a lot of their grants are more directed to monies to the fire department, monies to a school. They go to municipalities.
Correct.
But they're not so much for infrastructure type things.
I don't know if you're aware, but we've just got awarded a five million dollar grant to Texas Water Development Board. And that's for a new water well, and it's gonna be along, on the south side of, like, close to I-ten, along there. And, so it'll pay for the new water well, I think to get that water into our system now, to a water treatment plant, and AMR meters for the water system, so water meter will be in that grant. And, am I thinking, for anything else?
Property about all the covers.
Property, yeah, property of two, luckily developed.
So you're talking about the water facility here in town, is that being upgraded, updated? I'm pretty sure that's kinda outdated.
That's not part of it, so that's really just a storage tank.
You're talking about number one, right?
Yeah, number one, it's just a storage tank. We do have that number three, a plant number three up by the ambulance, that's another storage tank. The actual treatment facility, there's a treatment facility at, at both of those two wells.
Which that water has to, from the new well, has to go to, through there. Unless we have to get a treatment plant at that same site of the new well.
And that's an additional two million dollars.
And just to piggyback on other comments, like, I know there's some, what do you call them, deadloos or whatever?
Dead ends.
But it did ends, on, like, but there's some in some newer neighborhoods, I just don't understand why that happened, like, you know, Park Drive, that's a newer, you know, housing and stuff like that, you know what I mean? Like, why wasn't that connected when the houses are being built there? I guess is where I'm getting, because the houses were built...
I was a period at times, yeah.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, with the houses were built, it's a couple of years.
But somebody else...
I just, I'm not curious.
A part of that answer could be, back in the, fifty's, like, sixties of this one, that subdivision sort of being started, and again, that's sixty years ago.
Right.
If there's a new house built, the, like, the property owner just basically, I just need to connect in there. That's all they did. And it didn't mean that they went to the end and got flipped around, they just took their, their permit and went right into where the line was in front of the house.
Because there are no houses along, is it Dunn Street? Am I correct? No, Street, I mean, there's no houses there. It's a pasture on the backside of it, and then the sides of the two houses. So maybe they didn't figure there was a need to do that.
There, there is a house that developed within the county. We didn't have any jurisdiction on it. They built it within the county at the end of the subdivision here, which means, in order for the city to serve them with our water line, we had to go down to their house. Now, their house, I've, I've seen, there's two adults and I think three or four children. They will not have the water usage equal to all these other houses in this area at certain hours of the day. So, if we don't install a flush valve at the end of that line, right there where you see that Y, and we flush that either bi-weekly or monthly, then there's a chance that water could start showing up in these homes again. But that's what one of the dead ends does, it creates it where, when, when it gets heavy usage on this end, it backs up and sends that water out of that dead end. And then, when you and your houses start turning on the water, sucked into your homes.
And because they weren't in the city limits, I'm pretty sure they had to pay the expense to extend from the dead end to their dead end.
That makes, I mean, yeah.
But we will be addressing that a little.
I think, if I'm not correct, it's a string interest.
Well, we're not casting any blame here, we're just saying, as development occurs,
Yeah.
if it gets outside our jurisdiction, which, obviously, these that are down here that we were talking about earlier were within the jurisdiction, but in some instances, it happens like that, you will be seeing flush valves at the end of the line just sticking up out the door. That's what it's forced to kill that dead end and throw that water out of there.
Yeah.
So, Don, going on the comments though, about the iron, we know that those wells along the tracks here produce a bunch of iron. Have, I asked this, I believe, in the June council meeting, have we not looked at filtration systems on the wells themselves instead of putting that water in the lines and putting polyphosphate in there?
We did look into that, there was a filtration system on that at some point. At some point, someone decided that it was too expensive to put the filter media in there, and just quit putting the filter media in, and didn't maintain the filtration system. And we really don't know what condition that's in, we can have that investigated, and maybe demolished and a new filtration system put in. Probably, that's my recommendation, have a new filtration system put in, because what's out there is old, it's aged, it's deteriorated from neglect. It's better to have a new system in.
I, I think we should be looking at that. I mean, and if Vethco, or, I don't know if Vethco can look at that, or is that more string?
I would be Vethco.
Yeah, I mean, we need to do a budget amendment for that too, to, to figure out, go out to bids, I think that's, I mean, if we know we're putting these high iron magnesium out in water lines, we need to take care of it.
Cause you know it's on the spike place.
Those are public places.
So, are you, are you having a say, maybe around the way, before we go forward with the polyphosphates, let's check on the filtration system?
I would.
And Columbus just did one, two months ago, so we can get with Donald, maybe tomorrow?
I've got, I do have four calls up to Donald.
Okay.
Two a week, he hasn't recalled to return my call.
Or visit him or something?
Yeah, I'm very sick of, seriously considering that the next time I'm headed to Columbus.
Okay, they, they moved in not too many years ago.
Well, but if he's not the answer, you have engineers.
Sure, sure, sure.
Who gives an idea what, what's a to a for that system?
Bradley could probably try to, I don't really...
They could take him, call him Mercer.
Mercer, well, probably public information.
We do have Mercer working on some of our water wells at this time, so we can get with them on that for us.
The remixer.
Oh, the remixer?
Ah, okay, sorry.
It would be good if we could finally get some action going, dealing with these hotspots where all the red dots are. And, um, I would like to make a motion that we have a vote of around two hundred thousand dollars to deal with the closing of those loops and those two hotspots. See what happens.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Tucker, and a second from Councilman Cardino. It's open for additional discussion, and we can keep discussing this until you guys are ready to vote, or ready to vote now.
I think a lot of all these problems, well, it'd be nice, you know, as a council person, that, you know, I think Kurt's mentioned this in the past, that however often you guys need us to address this ongoing problem, you know, we will make ourselves available. So, you know, cause, let us know you need to meet, and we will meet. Let us know that citizens have been waiting for a long time, this is, this is step one, it's not like nothing has been done, but we have some pretty serious problems with the E F P for us, if you call on this, we'll be here to take care of it.
Thank you.
And, and to build on that, I mean, we care about the big picture, we wanna get the dead ends fixed, but if we have mild or, I mean, a thousand feet of water on, and it needs fixed, and it's gonna cost millions, I wanna know what the total number is, and then we're gonna have to make some decisions, I don't wanna go raise taxes, uh, but then we're gonna have to prioritize, you know, where the problem areas are. I, but I don't like spending two hundred thousand here, eight hundred thousand here, we're gonna do that for the next ten years. I'd like to know if it's gonna cost ten million dollars, and obviously, we don't have that. I mean, I know this comes down to money, if we had ten million, it would've been fixed years ago, um, but that's what I care about, is I wanna get an engineer where they're streaming or B E F O, to tell us what that big number is.
We'll get with B E F O tomorrow.
And it's, it's frustrating to me, I don't know what to say, is, we, we have, we had Strand doing water quality reports. I don't know what the outcomes are, I don't, you know, we can't say, do this and we're gonna fix this from that report, I'm just disappointed in that report. That's my own opinion.
I agree, I mean, that took months to tell us.
Exactly, nothing, basically.
And y'all saw the report, I, I'm just disappointed, that's my personal opinion.
Unfortunately, they said nothing.
Unfortunately, they told us what we already knew, we have dirty water, we have iron in the water, we have cell plates in the water.
And I think we already knew that.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think our citizens-
Well, if we said, those people did.
My wife tells me about it, almost did. And I, I agree with Kurt, that, you know, this is kind of a Band-Aid, we're banding it, we're addressing this immediate need, but we really do need that bottom line. And then, what is that figure? And then, we work up a proposal, put it out there, and then we, as taxpayers, decide, you know, put it to the people, and whatever the people say, that's the right answer.
Correct.
My two cents is if we have five companies that are putting it in instead of just waiting for one, it's gonna cost the same amount, doesn't matter, we can get it done quicker.
Yeah, originally-
If we had five bids and we took all five bids, and there was five companies out there replacing that stuff, that's a win-win situation for us. If we can get five of those bids.
Thank you, I'm, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Just we gotta find a way to pay for it, or we guys have to find a way.
There's always that.
David will make it out.
We're ready to vote, Mayor.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
How much was the motion for?
Two hundred.
Two hundred dollars. Well, we'll do a budget amendment at the end of this, this year.
And just a quick comment before we leave this all together, a big thank you to David, he works so hard on these things, but I know it is just really frustrating.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know if it's fair to say, but as frustrated as the citizens are internally here, I think we're just as frustrated with trying to get things, it's, I'll, you know, you give them two steps forward and three steps back, you know, it's, it's hard, so.
We're not Strand's only customer, and we're not B E F O's only customer.
I think that's part of that, I think we've been patient enough, you know, if they don't wanna work, find somebody who does.
Yep, I know we're only gonna hear from them. No, I mean, if it can't be somebody, and you can't, if we can find somebody who wants to work with us, then let's, let's, those folks want answers. Oh, forgot to answer to you.
Okay, uh, agenda item number four, discussion and action on cause of new water well and purchase of a land.
Mayor. The grant that we applied for, oh, were you gonna take that, David?
No, you can't, there are some, uh, numbers in your package.
Oh, page seven, one. Uh, the grant that we have, uh, filed for has been approved, it's completed, a footstep of paperwork. Uh, we're pending the closing to the bank, we'll get the money, uh, July thirtieth of this year. As you can see, here's B E F O's estimate on the water well itself, one point six oh nine million dollars. The water lines, there's eight inch raw water line between well four and the brochure to downtown water plant. That's two hundred ninety four thousand, they're gonna tie into that well water line there. Then they're gonna provide another eight inch water line from the new water well eleven to the closest water plant. That's on, uh, Townsend Drive, as I recall, right? David? Closest, yeah, that's at six hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. They're including a smart metering system for water meters, valves, and boxes at seven hundred eighty-two thousand two fifty, and the A M I system at two hundred eighty-two thousand. Total construction cost for the well, three hundred thou, uh, three million six hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The second page of eighteen, it gives you the latest Texas Water Development Board estimates, total construction cost, four million- Sorry? Four million ninety-nine thousand one hundred fifty dollars. For the water well site number eleven acquisition, we're looking at fifty thousand dollars. Legal surveying, five thousand dollars, that's by B E F O Special Services if it's needed. Capitalized interest, it was twenty-six thousand six hundred. Uh, we can't remember what it was for, but know the Texas Water Development Board and, and David discussed that back in January. Uh, environmental impact, thirty-one thousand six hundred, before I move from that, David, was that for the meters or was that for the well itself? Because the environmental impact-
No, that's for, everything except for the meters, the meters will not have an environmental study.
Correct, will that number come down any at thirty-one six?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Administration is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred fifty dollars to Langford. Engineering design is three hundred and thirty thousand to B E F O. Construction engineering is two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from B E F O. Application, five thousand dollars, B E F O already completed and paid for that. The water conservation plan, fifteen thousand dollars, B E F O completed it, and they paid eleven thousand two hundred and fifty for that. Engineering feasibility report, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, B E F O preliminary E F R was completed, nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five to pay for. They will have inspections, uh, through B E F O or another third party, hundred and ten thousand dollars. Construction testing of the wells, uh, compactions, structural wells, high strength bolting, et cetera. That's by another third party through B E F O, if it's needed, twenty thousand dollars, and a contingency of five hundred and sixteen thousand. For a total project cost of five million six hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Just a question, any engineers in here?
If I would've been smarter when I was growing up, I should've been an engineer, 'cause look what it cost me. For engineer costs, just literally everything. And we got five million dollars, and it cost three million to put a well in, but everything else that goes along with this, you know, is cost effective. Yeah, if there is an engineer, thank you.
That's the end of the discussion, unless someone has more questions or input, yes, sir?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, I appreciate that. Do we know the current depth of the well that we're using right now?
We have four online right now.
Huh?
We have four wells online right now.
Okay, do we know the depth of? I'm actually finding that, my follow-up question is, are we gonna be in the same strata on the next well?
Not that, what we have right here is these three wells that have the higher iron content. We're gonna be locating this out near the hospital off of Buick Drive, out in that general area, I mean, I can't say specifically it's on hospital property, the property to the west.
I, I know it's only a little bit down the road, but you can still dip into that same strata, you're gonna be pulling the same water.
Correct, but what B E F O has found out through their studies in, uh, Colorado County, water, not water development, water conservation district, they all said that's a really good area to locate the well, as long as we stay a thousand feet from other wells in the area. We have to stay a hundred fifty feet from pipelines and, uh, a hundred fifty feet from sewers, which we don't have any sewer lines in that area at this time.
There is a gas line that runs across that area, but we're, depending on the piece of property that we get. Correct, just FYI, we are, we have reached out to four different property owners, just making sure that we're in the right spot. But again, one has to be willing to sell, otherwise, we have to go, what's the word? Yes, sir.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, we would like to do it in the most professional and positive way.
We had a hydrologist came out here several years ago, and Dexter Bird's with his findings, that that is a good location for a well.
Okay.
Well, I was about to ask you.
His claim-
A lot of the hydrologists never would have. We were here when he came out to his presentation.
Right, okay. Danny, have we found a well depth yet?
I haven't, not yet, I haven't seen it.
And I think we have those sticks we use on those.
Yeah, I wonder whether- Too bad Teddy Ruric's not here, he can reach that way.
There, you can touch it color.
Eight hundred five feet.
Eight hundred nine.
Eight hundred twenty-two feet.
A little bit louder, so you can-
I, I got it, I got it, you're gonna want it.
Approximately eight hundred twenty-two.
Well six is the shallowest.
Well six is the shallowest at six hundred and seven feet. Uh, well number ten is eight hundred and five feet deep, well number nine is eight hundred twenty-two feet deep. Well eight is eight hundred sixty-eight feet deep, and well four is nine hundred sixty-two feet deep. And how deep are they expecting to drill on that, on the new well?
Yeah, stay above that thousand.
We'll, we'll have to go with whatever the hydrologist has recommended, they're gonna do a study on, they're gonna drill a test well.
Test well first, yeah.
Yeah, first, and go down and then test the water that's coming out, and once it gets to the best water, that's where we'll stop the drilling.
Hey, did, did you guys ask about the, uh, if you dug the well, could that five million dollar thing also go for, uh, would go quite exposed where the water goes in?
Treatment?
Treatment, yes, yeah. I think the answer was yes.
I think the answer is no.
Okay.
It's set to, the, the description of the, uh, grant says that, uh, it would be plumbed to the nearest water treatment facility.
Which is the, above ground, so.
Uh, by any one.
Well number three, or-
Yeah, folks out here don't know numbers, you just probably have to get far, but they'll take that right.
Yeah, by the problem, the big blue, the big blue tank up there, water.
Well, well thirty-two, I don't even know what that is myself, we don't have that, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's next to the blue house, it's okay, so I don't even know what that is.
By I-ten.
Any other discussion questions or comments? On item number four.
When is our, uh, when is the deadline that we have to leave it at five?
Our closing is July thirtieth is our closing, and after we close it, we can then purchase land, so, um, well, if you know when the final close out on this whole thing, has to be a few years from now, sure.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-seven, a few years from now. We're working, as soon as we do the closing, we'll do it as quickly as possible on-
I have a question. So, which, the set of numbers are we going with? I mean, you got one set of numbers from this B E F O, and then you got this other set from T W D V, which one are we actually talking about?
B E F O has their num, B E F O has their numbers submitted, um, that's what it's looking like, the total construction cost we're going to be, and on the page number two of eighteen, if you notice, Texas Water Development Board estimate, it's just an estimate.
And the same thing?
Same project. Yeah, just like, on, on the, uh, T W D V, uh, they had money in there for a bond council, and maybe sixty thousand dollars on it, we're not gonna have a bond council, so that'll save us money there, uh, so, but these are just asking us.
These are all those extra fees that would be, that would look-
This is one that's more detailed than the other, so.
It's just a-
That's a great question.
It's a good question also.
The well is three million six hundred thousand plus, and then plus all these fees.
Correct.
Makes it five million six hundred and fifty dollars.
Cause we could even see on the second page, it's B E F O, B E F O, that's just things that they, this is just strictly the well. And then just got all the fees, I think, for it.
Well, I think it dropped to five million because of contingency now.
Five oh five, oh, five oh five or something like that.
Yeah.
Which is why, that's why we didn't have to borrow money, it actually, it kind of was, who goes to David for, I guess, kinda told the state when he- We gave five, we gave a five point six budget, so they said you can have five, and then it turned out only was five.
Only five million dollars. I said credit.
I said you don't, yeah. You know, it's like when you used to tell your dad the movie was twenty bucks, when it was only ten, and then he'd give you twenty, then it was a month.
No, uh, any action needed on this?
We need some action, we need something to manage on this, Don.
No, you can, you can, uh, just make a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
No, it was just written, discussed, and in action, in case you guys wanted to.
We need to bring it up.
Correct.
Okay, see, I can, we'll have it signed, closing, right, we can give it out.
David, this off the back, now, I'm thinking, we ought to just put these A O S treatment stuff on the way up for the citizens, 'cause it's got some good data on the, the test of the water, 'cause I know probably people are interested in what we're seeing at the well. If anybody wants my copy, they can have it.
Everybody good on number four? Okay, we'll go to agenda item number five, discussion and action on recent police concerns and police chief. Thank you, folks. Okay, um, we have one person signed up to speak on number five, do you wanna speak early, Mike, or do you wanna wait for?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it now.
Okay, you wait?
Huh?
You wait?
No, I'll do it now, or whatever you want to do.
Okay, 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 go, perfect, go, step up to the podium and answer.
I just got these handouts, all this, the, uh, requirements that are on the line. Young man, young man, the whole local landlord may not- And then the second one is just a letter I got, uh, which-
What's the name?
Introduce yourself.
My name is Michael Kretik, I'm K R E, any K?
K O R E.
K R E?
K R E.
Yeah, I'm the court critic.
Okay, so now officially introduce yourself.
Sorry, apologies. All right, a lot of you know me, and some of you may not, my name is Michael Kretik, I'm a sixteen-year resident of Wymer, Texas. My wife and I own our home here in town, um, I've been in law enforcement for thirty-one years. I, well, I mean, I've had ranks from patrol all the way to lieutenant. Anyway, um, the new police, uh, chief of police job came open, and I applied, which, I don't know, maybe about two days later, I get a notification, hey, uh, none of the applicants met the qualifications, so we gotta redo it. That application was a bachelor degree, and I can tell you, in rural coun, in rural county Texas, hardly any police chief has a bachelor degree. They get them late, or yes, but not, you know, they call before they walk, so to speak. Um, so, reapplied, well, I don't know, a few weeks later, I get a letter in the mail saying that, you know, thank you for your opportunity, but we're gonna pursue someone that's got more experience and more, uh, knowledge, or, uh, whatever, you know, for the position. Okay, that's good, so, you ask yourself, well, did he have that experience? The answer to that is, you don't know, 'cause I never even got a chance to interview. And I could probably speak for the other local guys here, they never got a chance to interview. And my, I just wanna be transparent, you know, to council, I think it needs to be revisited, because y'all, we're gonna lose a lot of good people, a lot of good applicants. And the city of Wymer, I mean, as long as I've been doing this, I became more community oriented, and, and I believe in P R and, and community policing, and I talked to a lot of people, and the people of Wymer want their leader to be local, they want this man or woman to have roots here, because they know the people, they trust he or she, you know, and, uh, the, they, they know what the citizens want, they know what they expect, so I just- So I just, my opinion is, it needs to be revisited, and, uh, you know, go from there, because they, they're not gonna want, you know, somebody from way off that they don't know, they don't trust, and I'm just speaking what I hear in town, so, that's really all I have, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and action on recent policing concerns and police chief, as you just heard from Mr. Krennic, the first announcement that went out did require a bachelor's degree, and we had to scrap every application that came in, because none of them had a bachelor's degree. At that time, I reduced the requirements to a minimum of high school diploma with college preferred, and we had more applicants that submitted. We had about fourteen applicants that submitted at that time. Many of them came in off of Indeed.com or another application website. Many of them had turned in just a resume, cover letter, and a list of references. The completed city of application packet, which was comprised, which was required, was not submitted, and the personal history sheet by T. Cole was not submitted. So those applications, we did discard, because they didn't follow the instructions on the website for the job announcement. There's reason to believe if they're not gonna follow instructions on a website, applying for a job, they may not, they may carry that same attitude forward in the position. This is from the, uh, the, I have been sitting with a committee of four other local chiefs, and that was their determination, as well as mine, when I first saw that. Uh, we did move forward with some other, with applicants that had submitted completed packets, there were a lot of application inconsistencies in those applications, and some of those consistencies were significant. We wound up having two applicants that were best qualified. When we brought them in and did their, uh, graphic bio and their interview, there were problems in that too. Things that they weren't as perfect as they appeared to be on the paper, so they were not hired. Mr. Krennic, you're not the only one, sir.
I understand that.
I just want to give the city council and citizens that are here tonight, and citizens that are watching this on YouTube, we want the right person in office. There are those that may be the right person, that don't wanna live here in Wymer, we don't want them. If they don't want Wymer, we don't want them, why not? I think that would be the sentiment if you polled anybody in the city. So we're gonna keep looking until we find someone, the right person, that has the right qualifications, and the right attitude, and the right mindset about this great city.
We did expand that residency, quite a bit from where many of us sat, one time, so if you could open that pool, per the request of the committee, it felt like we were limiting our pool of candidates, so we expanded that quite a bit. Have there been some more viable candidates that have submitted since then, Don?
There have been four since then, I'm running the ad until, uh, October, or not October, speaking of August, the twenty-second. And, uh, if we get a sufficient pool of applicants before then, I will definitely start pulling people in. But, uh, at this point, we have those four applicants, and I'm meeting with the committee on those four applicants Monday at nine thirty.
So adjustments have been made on the initial one?
Yes.
Yes, making it not as stringent, I guess, is what we're saying.
Correct.
Based on what council was asking.
And that, and the city council was gracious enough to expand the area to zip code for Wymer, four five area model.
In that committee, Don, did you put that committee together?
Yes. I have, as well. And I'll explain why, only because in order to find somebody to interview police and understand that industry, I'm not disrespecting our new city manager, but had no experience in that. And just like school board, you have a board that goes in and does their pre-qualifying and do the interviewing stuff. It was a step to try to make sure that we were finding the best candidate for, or candidates for the city of Wymer. To build back those relationships, uh, with the surrounding cities, because we have to partner with Gilbert, and the Grange, and Columbus, and the sheriff's department. Because when they need our help, guess what? We're there.
And they're all professional law enforcement.
That is correct. They know better what questions to ask, again, no disrespect, than this man sitting next to me. I could probably toss that around to everybody on this table, that they're probably gonna be better at interviewing people, and knowing what qualifications there are. And they have access to systems that, um, can find more information on people, so it was an attempt in good faith to make sure that, it wasn't one person who doesn't have the experience of interviewing police chiefs.
I think it was a great idea.
Is it fair, I mean, can I reapply, or is it done?
I can't answer that, because I have not been involved with, other than one thing, is putting that committee together, I have not read one, one resume, I have not sat in that room to interview anybody, I can't answer that. That would be, that would be a question to later ask.
Excuse me, ma'am?
The city manager.
That's what I was gonna say, we need to address that with Don, if he can reapply, we can get him again.
Okay, since the council member was asked, I have to answer a question, I'm not trying to violate any privacy rules or anything like that.
Wait, hang on, do you want, in public, do you want to hear?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're waiving any privacy rights you have to your employment application? Okay.
I'm going to reserve that, you and I have a meeting at nine AM Monday, is that correct?
Oh, no, somebody else, that's somebody else.
Oh, it's Mr. Provi?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm there.
Well, I'll do, I'll just make a friendly suggestion, reach out to him.
Okay.
I just don't think it's fair for you or anybody else that has applied or whatever, that's just not anything to put out in public.
Okay.
That's out of respect.
Well, I mean, I don't have that in mind, so.
Well, I know, I know, I know, and.
Kind of a person, you know.
Correct, and that's what I'm trying to say, him, I don't pretty much possibly want to put you in a spot, it might be I have nothing to hide either, but just out of respect for.
I can, I know, I got.
I, I would like for you to visit with Don.
Okay.
There've been a lot of calls about the police chief, people are adamant about getting this person in place, and obviously, all these steps have gone on, we appreciate that, Don, but we need to make sure we get the correct person here. But this was a little broader topic, and the, the concerns were brought up at our last meeting. Mr. Duffy came in, very concerned about what happened out of his property, and there was an additional concern that, um, the council didn't know anything about it, uh, which, certainly, I can speak for myself, I didn't know anything about it until we were informed that night, and then, um, you know, was hoping that Josh, interim chief, could kind of fill us in on what happened. There were a lot of questions about why someone wasn't arrested that night, and of course, you have to have enough probable cause and all those sorts of things. There are questions about why we need to send out a red alert, uh, which I'm sure there are guidelines for that, I don't know what they are. But, uh, it was my understanding that, um, I don't think anyone at the council knew that police chief was not gonna be here, and that there wasn't gonna be anyone here to make any kind of police report. So you, could you kind of help us out with that, Josh, so we know what happened?
Absolutely, I, I sent out an email the Monday following my return from, from training, I would like to read that right now and make that, uh, public.
Don't speak fast, but also speak loud.
Okay.
Okay.
Josh, before you go, you had an email, and tell, who that email was sent to?
Prior to the council meeting on the tenth, I sent the email to the city manager, Dolores and Danny, letting them know that nobody was going to be here to, to present the council briefing, so, and, and I did get a response back.
So someone did know you weren't gonna be here?
Yes. I also, I also carbon copied, um, my, I had an assistant, and Sergeant Ellis, and the email as well.
That is correct, and, uh, I have to assume responsibility for that, because when I looked back there and I saw Jimmy sitting back there, I thought he may have had a report, it may have had come up, I don't, I don't know all the conversations that go on with staff. In the meantime, I remembered what I had seen from Josh that Friday before, this was the next Thursday, and that's why I asked Jimmy, I said, hey Jimmy, are you here to do the report?
I remember doing that.
Yeah, and he said, no, they didn't send me with any of that, and I said, okay, thank you, and then we moved on, and, uh, that's when Mr. Duffy stood up.
Okay, um, the email, the email read, I would like to start by apologizing for the absence of the police department at this past council meeting. An email was sent to city administration explaining that the PD would not be there to deliver the council brief to the current staffing shortage, and the focus was going to be on patrol coverage, and that I would be willing to answer any questions you all may have had on my return from training. I did watch the, the meeting online, and I'd like to address the citizen comment about the attempted vehicle burglary that occurred on July seventh, twenty twenty-five. I was contacted by Ms. Duffy at ten fifty-seven PM, however, I did miss her call due to me being asleep. Me being asleep for the night. I contacted her back July eighth, and was informed that there were, they were victims of an attempted vehicle burglary. She provided videos of the incident, which were provided to the on-duty officers at the time of the incident as well. The officer was contacted, and it was explained that a possible suspect had been detained following the incident, but later released. I once again contacted Ms. Duffy and explained that one was detained. She informed me the suspects were back in, in the area later that night. I was not able to explain why he had been released, and assured her I would be, I would find out why. I was able to make her, make her aware that Sergeant Ellis was working on warrants for the arrest due to the information being discovered after he was released. Pictures were then provided of the person, explaining that he was back in the neighborhood and walking around. I immediately informed Sergeant Ellis, and was, and Sergeant Ellis was able to locate him and arrest him on a classy misdemeanor, until he was able to finalize the warrants for higher trophies. Mrs. and Mrs. Duffy did not understand as to why a person with a weapon on another person's property was released at the time of the incident. After speaking with the officers, it was made clear to Mr. Duffy, Mr. and Mrs. Duffy, that the person was detained at MG, and there was not enough sufficient evidence to put him on park drive at the time. It was later discovered of a phone with his picture on the lock screen, and a weapon on park drive. By this time, information and evidence was obtained, and he was positively identified, the suspect that was later detained, that had been released. Often, the officers, both Wymer PD and Colorado County Sheriff's Office, acted in good faith with the information and evidence obtained at the time of detention. The officers did not have enough probable cause to make an arrest that evening. Ms. Duffy agreed after she reviewed her security camera footage, that it was hard to tell who actually approached her vehicle. I explained to Ms. Duffy that the person detained was not even the person that approached the vehicle, but was, one of the two suspects was walking on the street at the time. The communication between Duffys and myself, and other officers with the Wymer Police Department, had been maintained throughout the entire process from July eighth up to noon on July tenth. After all of their questions had been answered, I concluded by asking if there was any other information they may want to know, because I did not want the conversation left with questions, and Ms. Duffy stated that there were no further questions. I was left under the impression she was satisfied with the communication and answers received. If any follow-up question, if, if you have any follow-up questions, you would like to, like explanation on, please feel free to reach out to me at this, at any time. I hope this clarifies any concerns that may arise from the citizen comment. That was the, that was the email that I sent out, addressing the citizen comment.
So the video that McDuckis had, wasn't clear enough to, to see the victim?
Correct, the video was, was up their porch, and it was a far, farther, farther away shot from their driveway. So at the time, at, at that time of night, you couldn't tell who actually was, was where in that, in that video.
Of the three people?
Of the three people.
And there was one weapon found that, that night, Josh?
Yes.
But there was no indication as to whom that belonged?
With, yes, there, that, that's when they started actively writing the arrest warrants and everything else, because a cellphone was found along with that weapon, and it had a suspect's picture on it, so, had he already been released, we had to go to warrant, and so we were, they were, they were getting the warrants ready.
And then I had that system concern about the, you know, why wouldn't we alert the, you know, the public in general about those kinds of things? And we certainly have an alert system, but I, I would think there were regulations as to how that sort of announcement goes out, that we generally do that sort of thing.
I don't know if there's any regulation, I think Dolores, I guess.
Who, who makes that decision, I guess, who decides that any kind of general alert goes out?
Usually comes from either, uh, Columbus, Chuck Rogers, or the city manager, on the way it usually goes there. Unless we have like just a minor water leak due in general for one area.
Well, I, you know, I didn't know how to answer that question, I didn't know whether that was an appropriate use of that term or not, because multiple people have multiple small children now, you know, parents, if I had known, I would make sure I'd got my, my kids in, which I totally understand, I felt the same way with my grandsons were visiting, but, you know, I didn't know what to tell this person about.
So I think, oh, you may have to help me a little bit here, because you're more involved in that than me, but sometimes if you put something out too early, then it takes away from what efforts that they're trying to maybe get accomplished.
Maybe even too, if things go out too often, is that. Boy, you're probably.
Yes. I, I don't have an answer, so.
Read the paper about what you're talking about in Kirk County, I mean, that is the exact thing, if you're gonna, you've got to figure out when are we gonna send it out, and what's the hierarchy, and if you send it out too much, people turn the phones off, and they turn, you're not disturbed. I don't, I don't know what the city protocol is, I know the sheriff and the county emergency director can send up these code reds, I think it's their fault.
Yes.
I don't, you know, I assume each one sends it to a different geographic area, it's a, my understanding is that the city is an opt-in. In other words, there was a bill that was passed, I mean, there was a bill introduced two years ago that made sense. It would say, when you go to renew your driver's license, you give them your contact information, and then, uh, DTS shares it with the city for reasons that I don't know, that was detoiled by the governor. And TD, I guess he thought that wasn't a good idea to collect that information for the cities, and so now, the only way you would get it from the city is if you've signed up for it, and so, I don't know the mechanics or the technology, but I assume, since that's a list we control, that probably the city manager, and possibly, I mean, I don't know if the police chief, or police dispatch, we can, certainly that would be something that council could look at, and we, if it's our list, we can make the rules on when something gets sent, who sends it, um, and it, yeah, I, you're not gonna make everybody happy on that, somebody's gonna say you're not sending it enough, and other people are gonna say you're sending too many.
Absolutely, and not everybody's signed up together, that's another.
I knew, you know, we had signed up, most of my neighbors have, but I know it's available, but I didn't know who made that decision to send it out. I guess, would that be you, Don, or us?
As I just learned this evening from Dolores, yes, that would be me, and I'm gonna ask Dolores and Josh to give me that information, so I have it at my availability, what numbers to call, and what warnings to issue, and what.
A checklist. That would, that would be a critical piece, what, what would be a reasonable, uh, response for that? Yes, X happened, yes, we could do that, Y happened, no, we wouldn't do that, because that's a very important thing for you, so you need to know what parameters are.
And I think it can be geographically done by streets, correct? Yes, yes, you can put a specific area.
Because I know we get water notices, very specific.
But I would need, uh, notifications from the police department when something like this happens, as I said, of the night of the meeting, I thought they were here for a report. That wasn't the case, but I didn't get the report.
As I said, of the night of the meeting, I thought they were here for a report. That wasn't the case, but I didn't get the report on what happened that night before. From, you know, the Duffy's residence. I haven't heard any of that until he got back.
We didn't really have any of the particulars.
So sometimes that's a good thing, sometimes.
Yeah. Can I, can I interject something?
Sure.
Ninety-nine percent of crime that happens in the city, citizens don't know about. Citizens are at home sleeping at night peacefully under nets. The, the crimes that happen that citizens know about is either the victim, the complainant, for the traffic stops that happen. Okay? That's about all, about all what happens with, you know, who knows what happens in the city. The incident at hand, at the time, the information that, that we were working with, the most that had happened was a criminal trespass or a disorderly conduct prowler, with the information that we have, that had happened. The attempted vehicle burglary. Texas statute doesn't even have attempted vehicle burglary. It's burglar motor vehicle and you can charge one less on that. And inside your, your affidavit, you have to explain how you reasonably know, how, how a reasonable person would know that that vehicle was gonna be broke, that, that item, that vehicle, that house, whatever, is gonna be broken into if X, Y, Z did not happen. In this instance, the children walked out onto the porch.
In other words, it's a regular ticket?
It's, it's a classy misdemeanor, a regular ticket. So that's the information that they were dealing with at the time. Later that evening, when they found the phone and the weapons, then we're dealing with other information. Then that's when everything starts, all the wheels start moving, all the cogs start dropping into place and everything. So, you know, do we put something out on a code red? Or any sort of reverse auto dialogue? That allows everybody to class C, class B, class A misdemeanors, that, that the evading on foot, class A misdemeanors. It, it, it's not, it's not an assault or defense. It's not a felony offense or anything of that nature. Three people ran from the, from red and blue lights. Because they weren't even, hadn't even turned the corner before they started running away from the police. Nobody has to stick around for the police. Until they're told stop, you know, come and talk to us, you're detained, you know, you're under arrest, that's when a crime is committed. The fact that somebody runs away from the police, it's run away from the police. You know, all day long, they, they can, they can run away until they're told to stop. So once everything starts, started falling in place later that evening, the next day, and so on, that's when the crimes are actually being committed. We're discovering the, the information through the investigation that crimes had actually been committed. Um, I will also interject their, their search warrants that have been assigned and are ready to be executed to further identify the other suspects. We have people of interest, but they have not been positively identified. We're hoping to get that information through the search of these, of the files.
The only part I'd like to add to that is, it was kind of strange when Ms. Duffy says they called back at two A M., same residence, same everything. It takes twenty minutes for a cop to respond. That's unacceptable.
I was not made aware of that by Ms. Duffy at all.
Yeah.
That was information, that was, that, this is new, absolutely new information.
Got you.
So that, that, I was never at all.
That's what she said in live, you know, to us. And I think if it takes twenty minutes.
That, it will have, it will definitely be addressed. It will have to be addressed because I mean, it, you know, Wymer is not that big.
No.
Unless they were on another call. There, there could be, I mean, we're, we're, we're one officer town most of the night and most of the day. They could have been, they could have been signed up on a, on, on a, on another call that took that delay, possibly. Uh, you know, there's, there's other circumstances that might have caused that response. But if there was no other circumstances, that's definitely something that has to be addressed because, I mean, to get from one side of town to the other with the train would be ten minutes.
I have to say, more people know about this than you think.
Absolutely.
It, it spread like wildfire. I, I'm across the street from the Duffys, right on the corner of Park and Gemma.
So in my, my house had the gun thrown in the backyard.
Right.
And the clip and the cell phone was kind of towards Duffy's. So that guy is out, Chris, I mean, out of jail, he was arrested and then let go.
He was, he's, he's out on bond right now, yes.
So it, it got, it got spread around and there was another incident earlier that night at a neighborhood on Lester Street or a street near where these guys rolled up on this other house. Yeah. There was another, whether it was the same people or not, we don't know, but that, things were happening earlier. So the cops should have been aware of that. Whether she called, were those folks called in or not, I don't know.
Nobody. Big part of the concern that, you know, evidently this trio or whatever it was, you know, had been out and about in other places and now they migrated over here.
Ms. here and Ms. Duffy were the, were the first, first, first people to call that in. There was no, until, until the next day, there was no other reported incidences of any people burglaries or, or anything that happened.
I'll interject there. It was probably put out on Facebook
Yeah, absolutely.
Before somebody made a call to the police department. And by every meeting, talk about Facebook, you can, even though it's a source of information, I get that. But you gotta make the phone call to the right people.
And we put it out on our social media as well, the, the police department's social media, their, their Facebook page the next day to, to get the information out there that this did happen. You know, when any incident happens that is a major incident or, or that could possibly progress into a major incident, we put the stuff out there on, on Facebook for transparency. You know, we don't put everything out there. Like I said, we don't put traffic stops out there or whatnot. But we put the, the accidents, you know, the, the, any, any major incident. So um as going into speaking, would this be something for the city manager to know about, that, for, to put out on a code red? Doing with class C, class B, class A misdemeanors. Probably not something that a busy person needs to be, needs to be put out there. Now, we could put it out there as to report any suspicious activity and not anything further about an incident happening, but just to report any suspicious activity. You know, so we could, we could do something of that nature, not to, not to, not to cause a stir within the community, but to raise the awareness of dogs barking or anything of that nature. Um, believe it or not, dogs give away prowlers more times than, than anybody else. So uh that would be something. But if, to, to actually say what is good to put out, you know, give a list of what, what we can and can't. You have to look at the totality of the circumstances and you have to look at the, the fluidity of the situation. So, you know, it's kind of, it, it would have to be a judgment call on the officers responding that night to wake the city manager up or wake somebody up that has access to code red. The police department does not have access to code red, to my knowledge. You know, it's, it's possible, but if, when this was set up, this was set up, you know, city managers go. So who they put out there, that, you know, for access is who they put out there. That had, the city manager has no, Mr. Dixon has no control over that right now, you know, until he found out about it. So that would have to be, I regress, things go back to, that's gonna have to be a judgment call on the fluidity of the situation on if that officer is gonna wake up the powers that be to actually get that out there at the time.
But it's certainly an issue that the city manager should be aware of, of those types of events so that, uh, you know, if the council is asking him or her, then that person could inform us. And whatever happened in terms of the communications, the city manager didn't have any of that. He could not tell us what had happened, uh, which put everybody on notice that that's not a good thing. And of course, there's no comment about the uh, the job that you guys do. It's a very dangerous job. I can't imagine why anybody in the world wants to do it. Thank God that you are doing it and our officers are doing it. Uh, but certainly awareness, sometimes we just need to, well, I think we live in a time where you have to be aware of your surroundings all the time.
For an officer's standpoint, had, let me back up. Has the city manager been notified about major incidences and deaths in our, in our community? Absolutely. Yes, he absolutely has. I, I have, I have personally informed him of, of a few situations. From an officer's perspective, we deal with people running away from the police. We deal with guns. We deal with drugs. We deal with all this stuff. You know, this is, these are incidences that, that police officers, you know, falls kind of on the lower spectrum. And let's face it, we also live in Texas. Everybody carries a gun, right? I mean, the average, an average Joe citizen is gonna have to get in a car. So these are, some of, some of these instances are kind of low at, from an officer's standpoint as to when do we notify? You know, so it's kind of, it's kind of hard. And that's kind of what I was saying, that's what I was saying, you know, it, we'll have to take it on a case by case and, and a fluid basis.
Right.
So.
What I'm making, Josh, is by the time we had that meeting and Mr. Duffy standing at that police, you know, telling us about what's hurting his concerns, which were legitimate.
They were.
The city manager didn't know about it, but that could be shared with us and he did, he says he didn't know about it.
He did not know about that situation.
That's a problem. That's often, that's what I'm, I'm thinking. We need to make sure that that sort of thing doesn't occur in the future.
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to set out directions that, to all of our officers on, on any given situation that kind of resembles this one. That may not seem important to us, but it will seem important to the, the group, the, the whole.
Like an orange flag.
Right, correct, like an orange flag.
That information, that's mine, you're the acting chief right now. If that, that information goes to the chief and the chief can, you know, look at the hierarchy and call the city manager. That's, that's the chain of command.
Correct.
So uh you've been working very hard, Dan.
Something that hasn't been said, just to make sure that we're aware. We have no curfew in the state of Texas anymore. So those young men that were out there, they weren't breaking the law by walking on the street at eleven o'clock at night or two thirty or four thirty. It's not against the law. So they have their rights also. Just, I would be, if somebody was walking on my street at eleven o'clock at morning at, at nine or two thirty, I'm gonna be making a phone call and ask whoever's on duty. And I'm breaking the law, they're just walking. It doesn't mean you can't stop and ask them, what are you doing in a neighborhood that you don't live in? But it wasn't against the law with what they were doing.
But it's one of your response times, you know, except when you're there.
For the second one.
Correct. Well, I'm saying even if it's my call, I shouldn't take twenty minutes.
Should take twenty minutes to get anywhere in time.
And Chief, I have one, one any question on this. So you said we're short stabbed, correct? When was the last time we've had two officers on duty at night? And they, just curious.
Yeah, four P, we used to have two, from four P M. to four A M.
Correct.
Do we still have that?
We have the, we have, we have a two to two shift because the four A M. started pressing into not much was happening. You know, at four A, you know, from, from about two o'clock to four o'clock. Um, and it was just, I'm gonna say it, it was time reallocated to a, to the, to the portion of the time, the higher, the higher traffic times, the, when the bar is released, the travel time is back and forth home. After two o'clock, every, you know, it's.
Busier.
Yeah, the busier times.
Got you.
Um, to answer your question, how long has that been? It's been May is when we started having to move people around and having, having one shift that was lighter than the other shift and whatnot.
And do we have openings for those positions right now?
Correct. We, we do have somebody in background to fill and we're, we're still looking.
How many vacancies right now?
Two vacancies plus the chief.
And we would be fully staffed again?
Correct.
And there's no applicants that apply at all or is it, or just making sure, are we getting applicants at least or is it pay that, that we're not getting?
We have, we have one applicant that is in background right now
Okay.
That, that would fill one of those spots. So we will be reverting back to where we were at, at about May and have one heavier shift and one lighter shift. And that shift is open for overtime to where any of the officers on the opposite side can come and fill that shift. So, and that's, that's where we're at. That's what we're doing right now. The, the, the open shifts that we have are open for the officers to pick up shifts to fill in those gaps and.
Are they, are there any obstacles, Josh, that prevent you from, you know, hiring people that you're not getting the applicants that you would like? Is, is the salary inappropriate for the, for the task? What, what can we do to help you?
We are, we're losing people to the, to the cities, honestly, to the major. I mean, it's, it's really hard to compete with eighty thousand dollars. You know, and twenty thousand dollar sign on bonuses. It's even hard for us to compete with sixty thousand dollars. You know, so it, it, it's all about location, location, location. You know, if somebody from Houston or Katy area or Sealy area that's looking for a new job, they have all of these other agencies before they get to Wymer at the very backside of Colorado County. So, you know, it, it, it's a location situation. It's a benefits situation. It's a monetary value situation. There's not one thing that, that I can pinpoint and say it's, it's this situation that's keeping applicants from coming in. You know, we, we're doing the recruiting, we're doing word of mouth, we're doing all of the things. It's just not getting the applicants in. And it's gonna boil down to where we're, our placement geographically.
I'm gonna make a little circle here on the comment. Earlier, I stayed trying to build those relationships with Schuylburn, with Ranger, Lumbah, some of the sheriff's department. Um, it's my understanding, Mr. Hensy, would you raise your hand? Have you not helped recently?
Yes, excuse me, yes, I have several different ways.
That's correct.
Can I also say one thing? On your alert thing, you have to look at it two different ways. Officer safety is number one. You let all the homeowners know, hey, there's somebody in the area might break into your house or, or a car. They'll come out the guns later. Officer safety is first. Do you wanna jeopardize, get your officer hurt? You want that officer shooting the person because they don't know who the bad guy is, who the good guy is.
Here's the information for trying.
Thank you for saying that because it was trying, what I was trying to do too early. You don't wanna put something out too early because it creates more of a problem than what you clearly have. And if there's an officer, pardon me, in your backyard, all of a sudden, pop, you know, that's not the right person. It was the wrong person. Someone that's trying to help you.
Yes.
Constable Hensy has been very, very beneficial.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, we may be down to officers, but again, trying to build that relationship with those other departments. And somebody's right here in this room that's actually helping us with that. You had a second issue or did, or you said two things?
I'm sorry?
You said you have two things with, did you say both?
You said you had two things.
You had two things?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Did you have something else you wanted to say?
I'm done. Oh, I think you was upgrading on it here again.
We will amend the budget.
A big Q tip I do.
I do have a question. So are we gonna hire an officer before we hire the chief? Or we're kinda doing it togetherness, I guess you'd say?
We're racing, we're raising each other. Yeah, we're, we're really trying.
It's just as important as water.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it is. Yeah, that's the only bit.
And it kind of depends on who applies for what. I mean, we might have people that come and apply as an officer spot that are not interested in the chief spot. So if they're qualified, of course, the police department's gonna take a look at them for the officer spot in the background and see if they're even able to be a police officer for this city, you know, per our qualifications as well. So, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to say, you know, who's gonna get hired first because it just depends on who applies.
Go back to your question. If it's about money, that's council's.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Kinda goes back to, you know, the budget, you know, if you need support from the council, you just need to know what it is.
Josh, you may know this, we're pretty much on level with everybody else around here.
We're actually lower now.
Okay. Because I think we won't be hired. So, thank you for saying that to us.
That's, that's a budget issue right there. If we're lower, just like Yau said, we wanna be higher, not lower.
It depends on the position, but yes.
Sure, you get the good guy.
Counselor Christian, I'll just kind of add to what Josh was saying too about the staffing. It, I work in Schuylburn and it, we've had the same opening pro for a year. So it's, nobody wants to be the police anymore. And so.
Thank you for that.
If you're looking at what is happening to the police today? Thank you for doing it. I just can't imagine how you manage to do it every day.
Yeah, in the thirty-one years I've been in, I've seen a lot of changes. So, and that is not for the good.
No, it's not.
When I started, it, it was competitive. Like you, you were lucky to get a reserve officer position. You know, there was one spot open and. You know, there was one spot open and a hundred applicants. Now there's hundreds of spots open and one applicant. You know, the, the, it, it's all shifted, you know, when, you know, COVID came around, or maybe before that, and all the, the defunding came through, and the, the big shift, you know, took it away from law enforcement. It really, really did hurt us as professionals and as career.
I think there's just such an open disrespect for you guys and what you do. I don't think officers ever get it for the money. There's no amount of money that's worth your life. You did it because you felt the commitment to the community, and we appreciate that. Appreciate the benefit, it's just the, the disrespect is rampant. Hope you're not experiencing that here.
We do.
You get disrespected because you get pulled over for not using a blinker. But, you know, hey, there's somebody running my backyard, like, you gotta be there right now.
We, we definitely get the disrespect, but it's also how people are raised. You know, um, it's generational, you know. The, the generations that are growing up now are, you know, a lot of the generations, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna look at all of them. You know, because their, the parents out there are still doing a really good job on how they can do it. But they also have outside sources and friends, and you don't have to talk to them, you can cuss at them, you can, you can sit on their feet if you want to. They can't do anything to you, they know that. So, who's the?
Mr. Henzie.
I've got some beers on you, young man. I went to work for Colorado County in nineteen eighty-one, for the sheriff's department, where there was one deputy to cover the entire county at night. That was in nineteen eighty-one.
I thought it was sixty-six square miles.
That's right. And in case anybody wants to run for my position, it's not gonna be long, but it only pays twenty-three thousand a year, so y'all are awarded welcome that.
I think there's gonna be a whole lot of people running from that.
I'm about to run from it, not far as it is.
Mr. Henzie wanted to add to the payroll.
Yeah. You heard that, didn't you?
No.
We're inclusive, they're, they're increasing the payroll here.
Applicants are open.
The city does need to elevate the pay scale, it really does. Because you can hire an officer, by the time that's only coming here to the country to rebuild their career, to move somewhere else.
Yes, sir.
To where you become a stepping stone. You need to get young people involved in communities. You know, whether ride-alongs are a good idea or not, I don't know. You have to start somewhere with your own community to build a good law enforcement structure.
And Mr. Fred Horns, aren't you still to the city of Wymer by himself? I never even know who that is.
Joe Ducey.
My dad, my dad, my dad's in the city of Wymer by himself.
I still think most people come to Wymer because of what it is. You see it in schools, too, about any number of teachers. It wouldn't make any difference what they paid in H I S D. They couldn't work there for, for that. If they choose this, because of the kind of kids, the kind of appearance that we have here, and that's not being unfair.
Culture.
The culture, and we want to maintain that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak, this is item number five? Okay. Josh, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you good?
I'm good, but I know agenda item number six is on, I'm just hanging out.
He's just chilling. I would like to add that I, I hope to see a report, any suspicious activity notice on the city website through Delores and through the chief, that if you notice suspicious activity in your neighborhood, call the police and let them investigate it. As Mr. Henzie said, don't get your gun and go outside and investigate it yourself. If I can be putting an officer out for this.
That's the Facebook page, please.
Okay, yeah, our, our, our city, our city page, our city Facebook page, and our police page. Thank you.
Agenda item number six, discussion and action on golf cart ordinance.
Okay, so, as y'all remember, we started speaking about the golf cart. I went back and I made just a revision on, um, that was, was asked to make when it came to the, the safety equipment and the registration. I have, however, gotten, gotten a request for a few other revisions on, on where, where to move, um, golf carts too, in, in limited operations, and, you know, it was, it was questioned on if the police department actually would have the time to look at the registration. You know, at a zero registration, it'd be just so that the police department would know what golf carts are legal here. I am in complete agreeance that, that we can, we can, we can shift and we can move, and, and I was in complete agreeance that, it would cause a strain on the police department to look at every single golf cart to make sure that they're in compliance. Um, especially right now. And with it rolling out, that, you know, all the new registrations and, and whatnot, that would, that would cause a huge strain, and on the renewals, that would cause a huge strain. Throughout the remainder of the year, the ones or twos, no, it wouldn't cause a strain for us, but, but every single year anniversary, and when we, when we do come out with it, it, it would cause a strain. I do plan on needing to make more revisions to this, so I do, I do want y'all to, to take that into consideration before, before, uh, any action is taken on it as well, so. But the, the information in there that y'all have requested has been removed from it, and I'm standing here today to, you know, see if y'all would want any more revisions outside of what I already know.
Okay.
So, on the, I mean, I agree, city has been doing that, just like we go get our registration sticker on our vehicle. From the annex, go there and get your golf cart license plate, your driver's license and insurance. You get your license plate, you're done. And if you don't have a mirror, or a horn, or whatnot, just like on a vehicle, your blinker's not working, you pull them over and tell them that you need to fix. So, I mean, I think we agree with, I mean, take all of, in my opinion, take the fact sheet and, and everything else that the citizens would have to sign, um, out.
Okay.
Um, there is on page three of fourteen, and page ten of fourteen, they kind of contradict themselves. On three, it says, "The operation of golf carts shall be prohibited on any section street." And then on the page ten, it talks about a golf cart being operated.
Correct, and that was, that was one of the, the, the movearounds, is that, is the limited operation. But, so that, that has been addressed, and this was left in the packet, because it, it was already sent out, and it was not able to have the revisions made before this council meeting. So with the packet being sent out, it had to, it had to remain. But yes, here's the, he does, that same, that same question here, and that's, I feel.
I do like how you define the, the nighttime means, that's, that's perfect. Just so everybody knows, that way, if anybody's listening, it says, "Means the period beginning one-half hour after sunset and ending one-half hour before sunset," and that's, I think that's perfect.
Thank you.
Before sunrise. Before sunrise, I guess it's out there.
And this, this is, what is presented here, is that state ball?
Yes.
Other than, I think we got something in here about seatbelts?
Yeah, that's the only requirement that was requested, is, uh, seatbelt or restrained by a parent, uh, age, age or, or younger than age of.
Keep them safe.
Yes, exactly.
My opinion, nothing wrong with being on the streets. It may be more safe than somebody running a license.
Somebody can bring court, clean that up and bring it back to the office meeting, that would be pretty, probably enough.
Anything else you, hopefully you want to add to it back there?
I will say, definitely, if we can get it in, in place.
Absolutely, and that should, making those corrections are not gonna be hard, you know, and, and sending back pages out. I mean, that's a matter of just deleting the, the verbage from it, and, you know.
But do you see anything on it that might be?
I'm, I mean, I guess Josh can see the final words, if they're gonna, uh, have to go through it all.
Perfect.
I'll try to get it back to you.
I'm not, I'm, I'm also not trying to be an, and I'll be all, you know, go-to person with it. If, if, you know, goes to the city attorney and he sees a problem, you know, by all means, he, you know, he's gonna reach out to me and whatnot. So I, I do want as many eyes on it as possible. So we can make it wider, and not pull from here, pull from here, pull from here, pull from here. This will be, you know, so we make it ours.
He's just asking you to send him. Let me put it to you.
No, I'm good.
Everybody good?
Thank you, Josh.
Good, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, discussion on the sidewalk project.
David, would you please leave it?
Do you wanna, so, I, it's pretty basic. Yeah, so I, I requested this, uh, item. So what it was brought to me is, you know, we have these sidewalk projects, and it's through some residential areas. And they said, well, yeah, you can look at plans all day long, but where does that sidewalk fall? And the suggestion was to me was, well, I can't leave hospital out in state where it's gonna be six, seven months before. At least you have an opportunity to see where it's gonna be, and that gives you time to make revisions and everything. Then David reached out to, was it the engineer, is that correct?
Travis, always with tech talk.
And so he explained that it's gonna be pretty much at the edge of the curb line, which is the best bet for, for those areas, and and he proved clear, clarified all that, and that way the citizens do know if they have any questions, call up, and it's gonna be at the edge of the curb line.
Can I clarify that for me, 'cause
So?
Will it touch the curb, or will there be a grass sidewalk?
Touch the curb on North Street, on the south side of North Street.
Touch the curb, which is perfect.
It'll be different along Eagle.
That's good, 'cause there's already sidewalks there.
Yes, and I asked the gentleman, I said, "Why do we have to have that grass stuff?" He said, "It's a buffer zone, so people on the sidewalk have a little buffer zone before they get onto the left road." It's just a safety concern. So Eagle Street will be that way, Center Street will be with the little buffer zone, uh, where possible. And then we're gonna turn left on North Street, go west, and then where we get to the ball field, there's roll parking. It'll be, uh, back off that roll parking, so that bumpers and things like that, cars don't hang out into the sidewalk. 'Cause people will be parked there. And then where it goes up to the Veterans Park, uh, north, I think they're, they're planning, um, this is a short, on the side of that one house. Curb, uh, space, and then the sidewalk. They have made arrangements to save one resident's tree.
Yeah, but that fits, when you get up against the curb, that's true.
Yeah.
That just makes sense.
That's good for them, yeah, because that was in trees in people's front yards. Yeah.
And the grass, and all those ladies with high heels at Catholic church, they're gonna get the grass.
And they are, uh, this will, at the Catholic church, it will alleviate some of the drainage, uh, the box drainage on the corner. That'll be rebuilt, as a, as a
That's cool, yeah.
They're gonna take that, the city was on the hook for that at one time, um, but they're gonna take care of all that stuff.
David, is it a, or Kyle, is it a four-foot wide sidewalk, or five-foot?
Four-foot.
Four-foot wide.
Thank you. Thank you for going around the tree. That's amazing. It just made no sense to me why there had to be grass in between. Just makes no sense. But sometimes engineers get a little wacky at first.
Sorry.
Okay. And they sit down and understand.
They're charging you.
That's absolutely
Wonder where we're gonna start on it? Uh, he said, "Don't get too excited, it'll probably be another year." As tech talk, as tech talk, uh, standards are.
Look how long it took Columbus, once they started and then they finished, but then didn't finish.
Thank you, David, for that as well.
Anybody else? Okay. Agenda item number eight, discussion and action on purchase of Kubota tractor through Sourcewell, that's page nineteen.
David, if you'd leave off with?
Yeah, so, uh, as you all aware, we, uh, our Kubota tractor we have now is on its last legs. And, um, I reached out to, uh, Eagle Kubota and the Grange, Mike's been very helpful, uh, getting to this price through, uh, Sourcewell. There was three tractors out, one with a seventy-one horsepower, one with a ninety-two point five, and one with a one oh five horsepower tractor. Our crew wanted a bigger tractor, so it would be heavier when they're picking up things with their front end grapple. And, uh, so I told Mike, we probably wanna go with the one oh five. He said, "Well, it's the exact same chassis, just the engine is different." He says, "What we can do to accommodate the extra weight in the front is to, um, hydroseal tire ceiling and the rear tires." And that's a standard practice on the, uh, on truck farm tractors. Uh, I have water in my tractor. So, uh, this is what we're gonna, uh, this is the bid, if y'all would approve it, it's eighty-one thousand, nine eighty-seven, forty-three. It is through Sourcewell. This is a ninety-two point five horsepower.
And since it was Sourcewell, there didn't, there didn't have to be a bid.
Correct.
Was this something that we were already budgeting for next year, right?
No, we had talked about it for several years, and it's never known, ever. But this would be a budget, isn't it, this would be a budgeting?
On the extended warranty, could we buy some additional extended warranty while we're doing all this paperwork to cover more than two years? That might be one thing to look into.
You know they'll always insure anything.
Correct.
Yep, you can get it.
It's under, it's under the subtotal first one, it just says two-year extended warranty. But if we could get, I think we spend the money and get a five-year warranty, if we can get something like that, it's, we're gonna have it for the long haul, so it'd be well, well worth the money.
Do you get it now, or are you waiting?
Get it now. Yeah, get it.
I would say no.
Get it in two years when that's running out.
Yeah, 'cause then you get the, or you miss the deadline or something, and I think you get it now.
You certainly have to buy it before the warranty.
And I'm sure it has, things are gonna go up, so.
Correct, it can be that expensive.
They just need to take care of it.
Correct.
If they'll buy it.
Is this in stock, if we can do it pretty quick?
Yeah, pretty quick. Yeah, Mike wasn't trying to sell me something that they had on the lot, this is actually, they do not have this unit on the lot, but it's gonna come, it's in inventory, it'll come from where they have a deal. There's, I don't know, five or six dealers close to us. So I don't know if you wanna approve it for this amount, and then plus a, plus the amount of an extended warranty, a five-year warranty? Do you prefer it like that?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you're, if you're gonna make a motion, make sure you explain that out.
Make a motion to amend the budget to buy this Kubota tractor through Sourcewell at eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-three cents, plus whatever amount it takes to purchase a five-year extended one.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Tucker, a second from Councilwoman Roberts, it's open for additional discussion. Hearing them, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those, motion clear.
Thank you. Want to have this in service for, uh, the next meeting, so. We mentioned that, so.
Yeah, I got a lot of them.
Okay. Agenda item number nine, city manager's update on open positions within the city.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Council. I have three, uh, positions that I'm addressing at the moment. As we know, as a police chief, it's also a public works director, and, uh, a regional building inspector with, uh, the city of Schuylburn. Interviews for the regional building inspector are Friday, two and three PM respectively. Uh, we have a well-qualified candidate coming on board, and we have another qualified candidate. Uh, chief review and interview is next week, starting Monday. I meet with the, the committee of the chiefs at nine-thirty. We'll go over the applications that have been submitted. And, uh, public works applications, they, we have a couple that are submitted and in review. Uh, one of them I spotted where they had a DUI, and I'm, it's less than two years old, so I'm really reluctant to thinking about going to that. It's just too high a risk with our equipment, our liability, and then so forth, so that candidate will probably be thrown out.
We could hire a part-time employee.
Boy, make him an offer.
Correct.
Could we make an offer?
He has to do drug tests.
And he signed, so pending, uh, physical and drug tests, he goes on.
Any other positions at public works there?
Part-time.
I think we have two positions left.
Utilities.
Three positions left.
Utilities.
Full-time labor, building maintenance lead.
Full-time labor, building maintenance lead, and a water, wastewater technician is what we have posted.
Okay, three positions open.
We, I know we talked about it last meeting, we're already a little higher than I think the other cities, but I've been here two years, a little over two years in this seat and I think we've had a spot, at least two spots open during that time, so I mean, if one is eighty-ninety an hour is how working, I think we're going to have to pay not twenty, but we may have to go up to twenty-five, sixty bucks. And it's the same thing with public works director. We're not finding the people that we've been here to, got almost a year now on that, I mean, we're not getting the follow-up candidates, increase the pay.
I think so.
There's the, the days of people working somewhere for thirty years and they're willing just because they like that place, they're over, it's all about the money. We've seen it in the police department, I really think we need to look at that. If we're going to build a team and move everything forward, we're going to have to look at increasing that pay. I mean, we'll work on the budget, so we can look at that.
Okay.
If we did that and then we had no applicants, then they can't claim us the pay.
Correct, correct. And I would like to add, of some of these police chief applicants, I have had three call me about that, and when I told them what the pay range was, they said, thank you for your time.
I agree with that too. I think, what is, what is our pay range, eighty to ninety or eighty-five to ninety?
I think it's eighty-three to ninety-two.
I know people that are working from home, a year out of college, maybe not. We're asking people to put their life on the line and be our chief and come to the council meeting every month and be questioning, I mean, it's, you're going to have to get a hundred thousand a month.
I think that's another one of those things that, I'm feeling that what we as a council want to do is, we want this police chief, we want it to be the best person that we can possibly get to serve Wymer. Interview those people and then if there are obstacles in, in hiring that person, this is what we would like, bring it to the council and see what we can do about it. You know, we, we don't know what we don't know.
Correct.
You know, and if the salary is an issue, then just do something about it.
That's up to council with salary, because again, that's a, that's a numbers thing.
Exactly.
If you want to direct them to.
But we just don't want these obstacles to get, getting in the way, so this can just, you're going to kick down the road and down the road and down the road.
There is some discussion, fire marshal's position maybe being fulfilled, not tomorrow, not next week, but there's negotiations with partnering with a neighboring city to share the cost of that.
Safe bill doing that right now?
So, just another position within the city.
And Don, you're again on the police chief, you're hoping that we can have some money placed by, when did you say?
Well, I've have, opening, the job opening announcement until August twenty-second. If I get enough applicants in at any given point that I can conduct four to five to six interviews, I'll bring that party in and we'll see what we have to go through.
What I'm worried about is way too long, and those people are going to be worried about something else, so we need to be on top of that.
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing them in, as far as I get applicant pool.
Perfect. It's like we, if we've got some viable candidates, we can, we can interview those now.
Correct.
And that's what we're doing.
That's correct, okay. Good deal, okay. And we were running it only two weeks at a time and you really can't, some people, they may be looking at it the last day, well, I don't have time to buy it, and they just leave the page.
That's on them.
True, but.
Okay, everybody good on that?
Yeah.
Okay, agenda item number ten, executive session under Texas government code sections five five one point zero seven for personnel matters, city manager review, and I'm just going to read this other one just because I need to cover the real estate part of it as well. Executive session, the city council and the city Wymer reserves are allowed to adjourn into executive sessions at any time during the course of the meeting to discuss any of the matters listed as authorized by the Texas government code sections five five one point zero seven one, consultation with the attorney, five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, which is one of the things we'll talk about, five five one one zero seven three, deliberation about gifts and donations, five five one one zero seven four, personnel matters, five five one one zero seven six, deliberation regarding security devices and security audits, five five one one zero eight six, certain public power utilities, competitive matters, five five one one zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development, and five five one one zero eight nine, deliberation regarding security devices and security audits. We do have a agenda item number eleven, action on city manager review, so I don't know how long this might take, it might take thirty minutes, it might take an hour, it might take an hour and a half. So, I've kind of instructed that the folks that are on live stream, we have no clue when we're coming back, so chances are, we won't come back to do the live stream. If agenda item number eleven, something does happen, obviously that'll be in the minutes of our meeting, so we'll go from there. So, I'm going to say we'll go into executive session at seven forty-six.